Mr. Chairman, please. I pledge the allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, tonight's meeting is being both video and audio taped, and if anyone else is video and/or audio taping, please let me know now. Thank you, both, right?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. All right, first item on the agenda is minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from March 3rd. There's two sets of meetings for the March 3rd. There's the working meeting that they had at 6:00 PM and a set of meeting minutes for, or 7 o'clock, regular meeting for March 3rd also. As so written, but it's in.
That's right, I forgot. I will second that. Any other discussion? Carrying none, all in favor? Aye. Okay, we'll go to old business.
I guess I can start. I met with the business manager at the Regional School District regarding concern that there was over the microphone issue at the special meeting. I spoke with Kami and she said that if this ever occurs again, if Igor happens to be absent around vacation, to have the clerk's office contact her personally or her fully prior to the meeting to make sure we could facilitate this and make sure we have microphones available for that evening. So I did have a conversation with her this week.
Okay, anything? All right, we go to correspondence.
Correspondence from Nancy Talbot, town clerk, Ware, Mass. With information on the upcoming open meeting training session offered at the Ware High School Auditorium, Thursday, March 19th, 2015. Sessions to be conducted by, conducted, excuse me, by attorneys from the Attorney General's Office. Further information can be found in the Selectman's Office or at the State Attorney General's Office. I think I probably should be attending that. Yeah, I'm also. Memorandum from the Board of Assessors. No further action relative to solar projects in the town will be taken up by their office until such time that job descriptions and budget constraints are discussed at their next meeting. Mr. Chair, if I may, I will be contacting local towns to find out how their assessor's offices are handling tax agreements and solar projects to see if there's stipends or additional funding added to that, and I will report it back to the board hopefully by next week.
Very good, thank you.
Email from Kurt Malin, party involved with Muscatanic Solar Project on Spring Street, extending to the board an opportunity to discuss net metering credits from a completed project to keep benefits local.
We should have him come in.
Yes.
See if we can get, contact him and see when he'd be available, please.
A reminder, the Planning Board will be holding an informational meeting on the three proposed zoning changes for the possible action by town meeting. The meeting will take place on Wednesday, March 11th at 6:45 PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room. All residents are encouraged to attend and provide input. In addition, residents may take the survey on a potential medical marijuana bylaw. The survey can be found on the Town of Lawrence website on the homepage under Town Meeting, Election Info. For more information on either, please contact the Planning Board Office. That is it.
I will not be able to attend that. I will actually be in Worcester.
I will be here tomorrow night.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to comments and concerns. Does anybody wish to address the board? Nobody?
I had an issue to do with the town hall bells, and I know you made an attempt recently, this past weekend, to try to turn down the volume on it, and there was another issue that came up in the resetting of the clock, but that was rectified last night. My issue is that ringing the bells at night is still too loud right now, at the level that it is at. It exceeds 10 decibels above ambient without a meter. I'm gonna take a very good guess, it does, because I can hear it through the walls of my house still. I feel that the town hall bell should not be ringing between 9:00 and 7:00 in the morning, which would be compliant with federal and state laws. It would be acceptable. I have a copy of the laws I'd like to give to you. The same laws that the Planning Board applies to businesses when they apply for a site plan, and the same laws we adopted in town. These are basically federal and state laws that are duplicated, the Massachusetts law society. And just for reference, I'd like to give you a copy.
That's fine.
Just so you can see what they include. But my request is, from you, is to stifle the bells at night. During the day, I had no issues, and legally, there's nothing I could say to stop that. But at night, it's disturbing my sleep, and it's been doing it for years, off and on, whenever they've been ringing or making noise. I spoke to the church next door this morning, or tonight, and they're not gonna be playing theirs at 6:00 in the morning anymore, it's gonna be at 7:00. And I think the town could have adopted these rules the same way. And I don't think it's up for much for debate going to the laws, for somebody to try to override it. I think the federal and state laws are on my side. To say that disturbs my sleep, it's unacceptable. And I can't speak for other people, but I can speak for myself. So that's all I can bring to the board.
I think it was agreed upon that we were going to silence the bells in the evening. It's just a matter of doing it.
The problem we have, and I'll, we'll go back. The problem is this, we went down and looked at it Saturday to see what could or couldn't be done. The bells run off a old tape system. The tape system itself is antiquated, to say the least. The only thing that's available to us at this time, we can turn the bells down, we can stop the Westminster chimes ringing on a half hour after 9:00 at night, which we've done, okay? And that is probably the problem here. That's been taken care of. We actually turned the volume down to a certain, a little bit. But the problem is, is we can't, there's no way, they're either completely on or completely off.
We can't put a timer on it, I'm sorry.
There's no way, excuse me, there's no way to put a time limit on it, Peter.
Are we sure about that, or?
On the current system that's there, it can't operate at a timer. We'd have to purchase something new and spend money.
How do you know that?
Well, I'm going by what Seth, well, there's no timer mechanism on it, and Seth informed us that it just can't be put on a timer. So we'd have to purchase more equipment to put it on a timer.
Now, one thing we can do, we can ask Seth to turn the bells down towards below the legal limits. That we can do.
And it's not chiming at a half hour.
Mm-hmm. And it won't go much chiming at a half hour.
Yeah, he, the time was off at 12 hours.
Yeah, that's what he told me when I talked to him.
Yes, and he was not aware of it, and he told me now on to call him when there's something more haywire, where he lives, obviously, you can't hear it.
So, that's where we stand now. So we're still gonna look at it again, but the only, the only thing we have to us now is either to turn it off or to try to turn it down again. So we will see if we can contact.
I think, I'd like to be able to have a chance to read this and go through this before I.
Absolutely. So, we'll, we'll look at this, Pete.
Yeah, this is the same guideline, it's basically, the Planning Board applies to businesses. And to anybody, we actually sent a copy of this, the Planning Board, to the people building the racetrack on Whiskey Hill, made them aware of it, that we would turn it over to the Board of Health, that they start to make noise that crosses the town boundaries. So.
We will look into it, okay? See what we can do. We thought, one of the things we thought about doing is if, we have some people that want it and some people that don't want it, okay? Understand we have to come in within the noise guideline, that's understood completely. One of the things the board talked about doing, if you can't solve the problem by turning it down, is to put it before the people and let them decide if they want it on or off. But we will look at it again.
Yeah.
We will see if we can turn it down some more.
Well, the company that Stanley contacted, maybe, you know, they can solve the problem.
Not in this facility.
No.
Yeah, the problem is the, is the, the system is 24 years old, okay? And we're gonna look to see what we can do, we're not giving up yet. What we're going to, we'll look at it, we'll see if we can turn it down a little bit.
Who are you gonna look to?
First thing we're gonna do is look and see if we can turn the volume down enough to come within guidelines. That's the first thing, okay? That's, and once we do that, if we can do, have that accomplished, then we'll start looking into something else, but we're gonna do that first.
Thank you.
Okay? All right, anybody else want to address the board? Sean, go ahead.
Back in February at your meeting, I brought up an issue about the safety rejection sticker on the highway.
Mm-hmm.
You were gonna have the police department investigate and a report, a written report by your next meeting. I'm just curious where that stands.
Go ahead, you wanna do that one?
Well, well, we contacted Bruce.
We contacted Bruce, both of us did.
Correct. And we don't have a written report to give you at this point in time. The chief had made an effort to go out there and look at these things. Basically, what I got in response was that because he didn't actually see the vehicles on the road, he's going by, you know, people, what they're saying that they saw the vehicles on the road. So, do we have a report to present to you at this point in time? No. And I think I'm gonna tie this right into the question that was risen last weekend regarding the police vehicle that was on the road. That question was also asked of the chief this week. I got a verbal response from him, not a written response. The board is still seeking a written response, and we're probably gonna sit down with the chief to go over this. The verbal response that I received from the chief was that he was doing what he thought was in the best interest to protect and serve the community during the conditions, the weather conditions that were presently happening on that, the three days that were in question. So, having that response from the chief, I would still like something in writing, I still, I spoke to the board today, and I still, I think we're gonna have to call the chief in, and we're gonna have to sit down with the chief and discuss this further, so that we can have something put in writing and see where we're gonna move forward with it. I'm not particularly happy with just getting a verbal response. I mean, I got something, but it's not what the board was looking for at this point in time, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to turn the highway over, that was my mistake. What we're going to do is call both the highway superintendent in and the police chief in, and we're going to address both issues with them, and we're going to get a written response, one way or another. So we are gonna call them in, this is not forgotten by any way, shape, or form. I called them myself, I know that Dario called them, and we will get a written response.
And what's the deadline? I mean, are you gonna put a deadline, or are you just gonna drag us out for another three months?
No, we're gonna call them in, we're gonna call both of them into a meeting, we're going to.
Yeah.
Can I, can I finish, please?
Okay.
We're gonna call both of them into a meeting, and it's gonna be in the very, very near future, we're just, we wanna get the answer to. We'll have to decide if we're gonna do it via a regular meeting, or we're gonna do it in another time.
I don't have a problem doing a regular meeting and bringing them in and asking the questions. I mean, if we can't get anything in writing, there's nothing wrong with them coming in and answering, answering the public here, you know? That, that's fine. We would like it in writing, I would like to just read what they sent us in writing, but I'm going by what they, what the chief of police had explained to me. I'm sorry.
That's okay, so let's do this. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just have, of course, he did what he felt was in the best interest of the community. I give him credit for that.
Mm-hmm.
If the law was being broken, and the vehicle was on the road, and it shouldn't have been, he's here to uphold law. If he's asked to put something in writing as to why he did it, and he doesn't do it, it's insubordination. Think about it.
Okay, let's have both of them come in next week, remember? And we will go from there. Yes?
I'd just like to comment further, that if you're asking or telling the chief of police or the appointing authority.
Mm-hmm.
That you, that you want a written report and you don't get one, has the board taken any further action?
We are going to call, as I said, call them in, we will take an action if we can't get one.
Right, just because he didn't see it himself, doesn't mean the evidence is not out there, and this certainly warrants him looking into it or, or action.
Absolutely, and we will, we have not forgotten it, Sean, and we will get a report.
Mr. Knight, do you still agree with the position that the board's taking to give it to the police department to investigate?
To investigate the highway or to investigate themselves?
The highway.
I, I would like to see that happen, our own law enforcement take that course. I, I, I wanna see them come before us and, and let's ask and answer the questions here. If we can't get it in writing, let's ask and answer the questions. You know, this goes back to some of the residents' concerns regarding evaluations and sitting down with department heads and reviewing these things. These are things that are brought up during an annual evaluation, or something gets put in somebody's file, like you said, they're not adhering to what our requests are. We can ask, then you put it in writing, I don't wanna be one of the ones who's constantly contacting our attorney's office and causing legal fees for matters that we can handle here. So it, it is kind of, it, it takes time, but you wanna make sure you're doing it the correct way, and you wanna get the answers, and I agree, people are frustrated. I've spoken to people on the streets, they're frustrated with the responses we're receiving and the time that it takes to get these things answered. So I would hope that we can move these things forward. If it's not the answer that we receive next week, then maybe we gotta seek law enfor, another form of law enforcement or another form of investigation to find out what happened, if it's not the answers that we're so desired to seek.
So you feel the police department is capable of investigating the highway department?
At this point in time, I think they are, although more as of probably by next Tuesday, when we meet with them in public here at an open meeting.
Have you not made a comment to a citizen that you don't feel the police department is capable of doing that, because they're doing the same thing themselves?
I made a comment, I sometimes feel that, well, I should say this, I, I think that investigating yourselves for something that you potentially did wrong is probably not the correct way to go. I don't know if we should be having our own police force investigate their own use of a vehicle.
I'm not talking about the police department, I'm talking about the highway department. Did you not make a comment that you don't feel the police department is capable of investigating the highway department for that safety rejection sticker, because the police department is doing the same thing? Did you make that statement, or did you not?
I'm not sure if it was that exact statement, but I did say something on that line that maybe because they're doing the same thing, we shouldn't be having that, yes. I don't know if it was those exact words, but something on that line, yes.
So what's our next step forward, then?
Well, I think we're gonna agree with the chair and bring them in next week and see, and then, we're gonna move on to something else after that. If we don't seek the answers that we desire, then we're gonna have to do something else. If it's that hap, I mean, obviously, it looks like things were not done correctly. Vehicles were used, residents reported it regarding policing the highway. So we need to react to this. It's been delayed about six weeks, I think, now, it's been since the storms and when this happened, the end of January, beginning of February. It's gone way too long. I think we dropped the ball on it personally, I can say I probably dropped the ball on this one, and looking at other things, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the board members, but yeah, I didn't. But when I heard about it last week again, I said, all right, I gotta get on this, let's contact these people and find what's going on. They haven't taken the highway, I'll take, I'll take the police and find out where we're at.
And you can understand how we feel.
I agree.
That when we see this thing happen, we bring it to our attention, we complain about it, and we see nothing happen. You've gotta understand.
I agree.
We will do what we can do next week. Okay, any other comments?
With respect to motor vehicle inspections and operation of vehicles with possibly compromised maintenance, has the Board of Selectmen done anything to direct department heads to ensure that town equipment is in compliance with mandated state inspection, and also that the vehicles are in the best mechanical condition that they can be in to be out in service on the public ways?
I have talked to both department heads, both the chief of police and the highway superintendent, and told them I do not wanna see a vehicle that has got a safety deficit, ah, excuse me, safety problem on, they're being driven on the streets. I'm concerned about a lot of things, one of which is the possibility that there happens to be an accident or something, and the town is open to liability. I have absolutely talked to both of them and told them that.
And were they in response in agreement? Was there, was there a positive response from them?
It was saying that it wouldn't happen.
Okay. Following up on that, this morning, when I left the post office on my way to the bank, I had the opportunity to pass by cruiser number two, the black and white Crown Victoria. Today is the 10th of March. On the windshield is a February 2015 inspection sticker, yellow, which expired 10 days ago. During the course of my travels today, I had the occasion to see that vehicle moved out of its parking place and operated on public ways up until as recently as 3:15 this afternoon. I think that flies in the face of your directed interest to make sure that all our vehicles are in compliance with state law. Would you look into that?
Absolutely. When we, when we call the two department heads in next week, Larnin, would you please, never mind, I'll take care of it, I don't want you to do it, I'll take care of it.
Call the board?
Yep. Yes?
Yes, Michael Burrell. One thing I'd like to mention, I was actually at the Capitol Planning Committee last night, and the chief was very uncooperative when we were trying to ask him questions about the, the vehicle that he drove with the inspection sticker, which is the Ford Expedition. That's the vehicle that has excess body rot and stuff like that. So one thing that I, that I would like to clarify, and Mr. Sawyer had said that the Capitol Planning Committee was probably not the right board to bring this, but one of the things I'd like to talk to the chief about during, maybe this could be done at the same type of meeting, was questioning about him not telling the truth at the Capitol Planning Committee meeting.
Okay, hold it, hold it.
What?
Now, we're not gonna discuss, you can't say that about somebody that's not here, okay? So.
Well, sir.
No.
Well, sir, you, you keep saying that, and I have a copy of your policies and procedures, and nowhere in your depart, nowhere in the Board of Selectmen policies and procedures does it say, when somebody in this audience mentions a certain thing, we can't talk about that.
Okay, fine, I'll take that.
So you don't have a policy.
I'll take that under advisement, my answer is, we're not gonna allow it. Okay, anybody else with comments and concerns?
Well, I haven't finished talking yet.
If you're gonna talk about that, you're done.
So, so you're telling me I cannot talk about a specific topic because you said so?
You're talking about something that didn't take place before the Board of Selectmen, it took place before something else. You've already said we're gonna call the chief in, that, we're gonna discuss a lot of things back then.
So, so I would like to be part of that meeting to ask him questions, and I would like for him to look all of us who pay taxes here and live, live here, in the face and explain why he did not tell the truth when he lied about the mileage of the vehicle.
Okay, enough, that's done. Comments and concerns, anybody else want to address the board? All right, we'll go on. Warren Emergency Management.
Mr. Slatman, thank you very much. We had submitted a request to the board in, in respect of our activities, which have been increasingly growing over the last three years when we first started, that we need a central meeting place in town, and preferably in this building, because we have many of our supplies stocked here, and a central meeting point that would be good for our monthly meetings, for any meetings that are required for training, which is an ongoing thing, so I'm sure you understand, and if FEMA or FEMA officials come through, so we could actually use the room for an operations emergency center. We, currently, we've been having our monthly meetings and other ones that are required in order to support our shelter operations at Quabog Regional. Sometimes those are very disruptive, because we can't find a space in school, there are many other meetings going on there, especially in the library. And we felt that since one room in particular upstairs has been totally underutilized for, I think maybe a year, I'm not sure of the timing exactly, but can we put that room into use and conduct all our activities at that point? This is not something, it's just a temporary situation, the CERT, the Emergency Management Team is here to stay, and we need somewhere to establish ourselves. I don't like to see wasted space, and I don't know if the town has any master plan for use of unused places in this office, in this building, but we feel at this stage we should request from the Selectmen that we can use that room, and it will be taken to full advantage, I assure you. We provided justification to you by email, and respectfully, I would request justification from you, all three of you, if that is not permissible. At this stage, I don't understand myself personally why that room cannot be used.
Which room is this?
Must be, must be the one that was going to be the conference slash.
Just this side?
This one, and it's one down by between the, I forgot.
So we're looking for one room, right?
Yeah.
What are we gonna have?
One down there.
Side, it's just meeting, it's, you want it also for supplies and things like that? Are you gonna be putting?
Well, we'll have some, we have some supplies in just Lockes and McCardos here in the building. We need to use some of that space for, for supplies, but primarily for our meetings, for training, and we're having much more involvement with the fire department of late in order to have training combined with them.
Over time, we can make this a, say there's a big storm vent coming, hurricane, everyone wants to meet, all the department heads wants to meet, have a big meeting, round table meeting, venture.
Like when they use the same room, it's the finance committee.
If they're gonna store stuff, yeah.
Why do you think they're gonna store things?
Yeah, we like to store stuff.
Distored in all.
We could give those back to someone else, we had everything in one room.
You did mention temporary, at one point, is this a temporary? Are you looking for?
We're here to stay.
No, I know that.
So, so no.
Temporary.
Not a temporary request.
Okay.
I guess my, the question would be, what are you looking for, for keys? You only usually give, whoever's in charge of something, one key, we do not give out keys to everybody that's there.
Right.
If we do it, there'll be one key given out of, if we decide to do it, we're only giving out one key, and that key would have to be given out to somebody from Warren, not any other town.
Well, they're already, they already have a key.
But we're, we currently.
Both are, we both have a key. We both have a key because of our position as deputy emergency management directors, so we just need a key for the room.
And you'd get one, we'd have one key only for the room.
Okay.
We usually only give one key out to, a key to the person in charge of whatever department, because we got, before, everybody had keys, and it got to be, people were in and out of here, and nobody knew what was going on, and so forth.
Yeah, I would imagine the main concern of the board was access to the building as a whole.
That, that's correct.
We had already been, I would say the keys to the building.
Would it possibly be just us two have a key to that room?
Yeah, and I think we'd probably just get one key.
How long's this been vacant?
It was back when Bob Sousa was on the board, it was the idea to bring computers in from the high school and put them in there so people could go up and down and use the, use the computers, and then it was discussed if we wanted to do a second conference room because of the fact that our, well, all, most of the building, most of the rooms are being used all the time. So, I guess my, one other question, what kind of furniture are you looking for up there?
We, we would find a way to provide tables and chairs from wherever we can, and from our budget if necessary, to provide what is needed in that matter. So, we're gonna scrounge, but we've done it all along with this CERT operation.
This wouldn't be an overnight move, it'd be a work in progress.
We, the, on Fridays, that, the heat's off, isn't it, or just very low? You have to understand that, too. There's no heat in the building, or very little heat in the building on Friday.
We have a little out here.
We do, on Thursday nights.
Mm-hmm, I'm just saying, I want to make sure everybody understands.
Yeah.
What's the board's pleasure?
I'm okay with it.
You okay with it?
I'm fine. Yeah, it is. They do a good deal.
Okay, issue a key, Larnin, consensus of the board to allow them to enter that room? Don't store anything hazardous up there?
Of course not.
And give a key to Mr. O'Brien, and we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick question, our maintenance guy, there's no need to go in, and you guys take care of that room?
Yeah, we'll get back, we'll get back in right now.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no problem whatsoever.
No wild parties, right?
Not too many.
Okay, you have a, you have the room you want.
Thank you very much indeed.
You're welcome. All right, next item is treasury warrants and invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve warrant number 73 in the amount of $36,900.63, and warrant number 74 in the amount of $117,451.37 dated March 9th, 2015.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? Carrying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, other business. Mr. Lash, any other business?
No. He's upset.
And any other business? I understand. You're supposed to, at least you brought the warm weather back with you.
Absolutely. I only have two things, and actually, it's just one, but it's two different discussions. I just wanted to say that the Polish dinner that the Friends of the Town Hall put on was very, very nice. I think it went overnight. I think this was probably the best dinner that they put on. I think they had a very good turnout. And I'd also like to thank the National Honor Society from Quabog Regional, because they're the ones that served it. It was just nice having people serve it, and having people run around. And I have the names of those four people. Could we send a letter to the four individuals from the Quabog Honor Society and thank them for serving? And we should also send a small, little letter to the Friends of the Town Hall, thanking them for the money that was raised to fix the building. Other than that, next meeting date is March 12th at 6:00 PM for the libraries, which is Thursday. And then the next meeting under that, regular Selectmen's meeting, is March 17th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. And that, again, is a regular meeting. If there's nothing else to come before the Board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?